Bill Hawkins used to be the attorney with Park District. And he did an awful lot of problem work for us. He was active in a swimming program. He had a couple of children in N WAC program. And he had to finally drop out as a lawyer because he became a... He was district attorney for the island and he became city attorney and he could no longer work for us. He called me and he wanted to know if I would help him swim in bed and coat. I was interested in swimming in bed and coat myself. I said, yeah, I'd be happy to help him. And then I wanted to get together with Park District earlier, but there was a little bit of a chaos going on this summer. So anyway, now I'm coming to give the Park District want to know if the Park District wants to be involved in sponsoring a cross-pen coat open water swim even on a regular basis. I think that it could be a mature event in the Masters program. It could be part of the community's attempt to get more people to come overnight, having speed over races and all kinds of things this year.
At the same time?
Yeah. So anyway, I got investigated. I rounded up three swimmers that think they want to do it, not including myself. But we would need... I think that it would be a nice idea if the Park District would get involved in that to see whether this is something they want to pursue on a continuing basis, setting up an event every year. If they think that if we did it correctly, we could probably get probably thirty swimmers. The cost would be approximately thirty dollars per swimmer, like the federal expenses. But this year, I think we're going to do it. But I'm wondering if the Park District wants to want sponsor, to be involved in it, or three furnishing kayak people, maybe would call the swimmers to be up there, do kayaks, and maybe some of the people that are in the kayak program might want to just do that as a fun thing to do. So I just introduced that to you, and that's my answer to your question.
Dave, you're sort of on the periphery of that big day. What's the implication of it all?
It's a very doable swim. It's a difficult one. It's gonna be in approximately sixty-eight.
Yeah. I'm not worried about the actual swim. I'm worried about the administration and the... what all goes around it for the swim to actually happen. How much work is there to actually do it rather than just turning up the kayaks and having people swim the kayaks? I don't know anything about it. You've done something like this. How much work is it?
Well, I can't... I'm scratching my brain to figure out what I've done if any people must have.
There was something that the city got involved in that I thought they...
Well, obviously, the city puts on, you know, big events. They purchased the marathon about five years ago. I've been doing that ever since. I don't necessarily know what kind of support that the district would give other than perhaps, as Mr. Prosser has mentioned, putting the word out for kayakers or what, or for advertising.
Just get it out.
Yeah, you know.
But, you know, we... They need to have public support for the levees, but events like this can be very beneficial. Bill Hawkins happens to be one of the most influential lawyers and probably politicians in the history of the country. That could do us a lot of help.
I happen to know Mr. Hawkins. He's a good man. I know that other swim teams put on open water swims. I know that other swim teams as events and fundraisers put on open water swims and the...
Which one?
Oh, no, N WAC doesn't. At least they haven't.
South would be, I think.
South would be, they might. Bellingham does one as a tribute to a former swimmer. But those are across lakes and not usually open water. But I think it's something that is very worthy for us to take a look at, especially from the standpoint that it does provide good public relations and puts our name out there.
Slow cost, low rate.
But what would be the implication as far as liability to us? That would be something that I would have to look at.
Sanctioning process through USA Swimming. And sanctioning health process for us is a lot of these issues.
Mr. Prosser, may I ask a question? Are you...
I'm just curious. Can you speak loudly?
I'm just curious. Are you looking at the tide tables? Are you... I mean, are you trying to find out?
Oh, I have to be done there.
Yeah. So my thought is, you know, the Southwoodby Marathon is August the 16th. And I wonder if that would be a good time, I mean, if flyers were put out. I mean, if you make it after that, I mean...
Definitely, Southwoodby has a kind of event on the 2nd of August in code.
Oh, do they?
I don't know when they did that yet. I can't get in touch with them.
Okay, all right.
I already got that about today. But we would do that. We were trying to do it in conjunction with there.
Okay.
So we're talking... That's only a few weeks away. That's only a few weeks away.
I realize that. No, no, this...
You're looking for next year.
Well, I was thinking that if we did it in the middle of September.
Okay.
The water is the worst.
All right.
I'm not sure. Too far for code.
It sounds to me like everybody's basically supportive of the idea, but that a week or two is a little bit quick for trying to get things organized and the sanctioning done and all of that stuff.
No, no, this would be the middle of September.
Middle of September.
That's two months from now.
Is that possible? Does somebody want to work with Harvey to see if it's possible for us to do it and what the commitment would be? If it's September, we could make a final decision on how we can support it in August.
Question for you, Bill. I mean, you're the... You're in charge of the Masters program. Would you want to be involved in organizing that?
Love to. I just think it's too much. No, no. Basically, if we were to do it, we would get... I think we would need to get hooked up with Masters, so if you can figure out the experience and the insurance.
I don't know a thing about organizing one of those things. I'd be happy to work with you, want to, to get started. And that would be a link to the Masters crowd and to US Swimming if you wanted. But I don't know what to do and we need more help. I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to, if you'd love to.
Well, yeah, boat.
No.
What?
Boat.
Boat.
Oh, yes, I thought you wanted a boat.
Yeah, we have a boat. So we definitely have a boat already, and so we need some kayakers.
Well, we need a ton of kayakers, but I think Steve's idea is excellent. We can talk to Peter and see if Pete Stevens and see if his class would be willing to put some life to... some tires or something, tie them onto their kayaks and go along with the swimmers, you know.
Well, I think if you guys are interested, I'd be happy to work with you. I'm gonna go ahead and try to...
Isn't it the other way? Yeah, you sound interested and you're trying to get us to work with you.
All right. I'll just leave that with you. And if you guys decided that you want to be involved, I don't necessarily know what degree, but I'd be happy to talk to all of them. Maybe you want to get involved.
Super.
I like it.
All right.
It sounds cold.
Thank you for your time.
How many years have you been on this commission, Harvey?
What?
How many years were you on this commission? Twenty?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years?
That's a good one.
Good to see you. Minutes approval. There are two sets of minutes in the package. First, the minutes for June 19th, 2014.
I made motion to approve budget board meeting minutes for June 19th, 2014.
Steve moves approval.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously.
Likewise, I also made motion to approve the minutes from special meeting budget workshop on June 21st, 2014.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So they're passed. One little point there. We have another workshop coming up, and we've been playing with budget numbers and trying to get this thing so that we can address it in a good way for 2015. And I was just talking to Dave, and he mentioned that our next session was for July 22nd. I thought it was August 22nd.
We were supposed to meet in July, do another proposal party, and August will be the final thing.
Go for the final thing. Okay, so would you guys be ready for July 22nd?
Will you?
I'm ready for anything, but...
I mean, what happened to Ruff on that? We talked about it earlier.
Sure. Would that be all right? And you're, you know, like... Lynn, is the 22nd good for you?
It's not as of the 21st.
The 21st?
22nd is a Tuesday.
It was going to be an evening meeting. I can remember that. Seven o'clock?
Yes.
Seven o'clock? Seven o'clock on a Tuesday? Seven o'clock on a Tuesday? Okay, 7:00 PM, July 22nd. I'm sorry, it's out of order, but I didn't want to miss that. So our next workshop is on the 22nd. Is that... Am I...
There. 22nd.
No. Okay. July 22nd is the rough budget, and we've got some presentations and stuff ready for you, and you guys will have some thoughts on it. And then you'll have until August to do the final thing. It's good? Okay. Next is voucher approval. There are a lot of things crossed out. Are those just names of people?
Uh-huh. And we could get them in our monthly parties that we have to do fun for when we're closed with some swimmers.
From the two weeks, huh? Would somebody move that we approve publishers 6294 to 6350 for a $31,244 and payroll transfer of $31,01... or, sorry, $109,800?
I will. I move that we approve vouchers number 6294 through 6350 in the amount of $31,244.96. And move that we approve the transfer of payroll funds from the M and O account to the payroll account for $31,098.85.
In favor? No, wait first. Any questions? It's sort of a messy two weeks in there, so it makes things not the same pattern as usual.
I don't have any discussion.
Okay. Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Staff reports. Mr. Director, staff reports.
What do you need?
Need you to report.
Really? What's that? I'm serious. Yeah? It's down clearly affected by our summer closure, or bringing up foreclosure and the transfers due to the military. We have four new members though this last 10 days, and expect warm up. Be done in federal ways last weekend, probably aided by 66% PRs. Good swims. Kids are swimming pretty well going into the BNS championships next week. We have five swimmers going down there. We've scheduled the dual meet with TAC for Friday night, August 8th, and in the process of getting volunteers put together for that. One of the things that's been a busy under the rank that was updated is the strategic plan in progress work towards Level 1, USA Swimming Club Recognition Status, who are 76 points through to 800 point total for the beginning of the level one right now. The energy savings, performance contracting group is in the process of getting their soft numbers together for construction costs, and they're moving and proceeding head on schedule.
What is scheduled?
I just received it earlier in the week. The schedule is to have the quest for funding through the Department of Congress by mid-September.
Well, we have a chance to review that for this minute?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
So when will we be able to see it?
In fact, what I'm suggesting here is a July 31st subcommittee meeting. And the agenda, 7-point agenda within that is in my report.
Send your report.
September 18th is the deadline for, I refer to it as Department of Enterprise Services is actually the Department of Commerce.
And this is what we would plan on talking about on July 31st?
Yes. Be a rough scope of magnitude and different alternatives in pricing associated with that project schedule, any analysis that we would need to be adding to that, defining preferred alternatives, and then come out of that subcommittee meeting on the 31st, either scheduling another meeting, or if it looks like we're good, would we add towards a recommendation for the August 1st?
Okay. Will we be able to identify not just the kinds of improvements we're making, but also the potential cost savings?
Absolutely.
That we would be looking once the work has been done?
Yes.
Yeah, we also need to know the costs on the wage for getting the thing done. In other words, we have to know the financial commitments. One thing that Nathan was really worried about was to make sure that we... to make sure we weren't going into financial obligations that in any way stressed the district over this project. So we'll have to have the numbers on that as well.
Absolutely.
Steve, anything? Okay. I do have one sort of cranky thing. N WAC strategic plan progress. You've got it in paid it here the way you do all the other times, but we've never approved an N WAC strategic plan. You submitted it and it took it away, and it was going to be looked at and then brought back for approval. And now it's in the summertime, and I haven't seen it approved at any time. So the gray sort of may say where you were thinking at a time, but it's not your plan. Okay? So you might try and figure out what you're going to do to get the strategic plan in place so that we can follow it through. You know, you want to have a level field so that when people are talking about how the thing's going, it's based on something or other that has been agreed to by everybody. Okay? I said nothing?
I think at one point we said that there was going to be a meeting scheduled to review that, and you have that, you have schedule?
We haven't got it because you were going to take it back and work out... you took it away from us to fit it into the system, and then you were going to bring it back to us.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll look forward to seeing it someday.
Okay.
Okay. But the gray may be your plan originally, but it hasn't... we haven't... it hasn't come through the commission yet. Okay. Okay.
Aerobics.
Aerobics.
We had a good run. About 129 pages. Although it won't show up on the... number because we're working on a lot of computers, their life passes or general passes. We're working with the system. People change where we can blend it between aerobics and the red light patrons company. Because a lot of them are using just their pass.
Do they use an unlimited pass? We saw it set up. We don't know what they do once we scan them in. We did create buttons in the soft setup, like if a military dependent comes and plays for aerobics, we can see that that's a military dependent aerobics. So we're making progress. Just we saw it's not just user-friendly system for tapping things like that.
I noticed that it was a special fee for aerobics too. It's higher than... I didn't know that until today.
It was $4. Still doesn't show up when they come in. But the patrons who use Dota, who use their year-long pass or they don't pay for it.
Well, that's a challenge for you guys.
That's what I'm saying. That's what we're working on.
Thank you.
Boys, we had a good one, you know, a lot of problems lessons. Going strong. We had great process. Going strong here. Did staff training twice on spinal injury management. We're contracted with Skagit Valley College as we knew we drew. They have a lot of programs we're working on, which I'll discuss later in the future. And facilities maintenance, our pump should be here any day. Finally.
Then we'll have to install.
Yeah, Matt. The motor came today and we're still waiting to run from.
Super. Yeah. How about the fitness club?
Fitness club. Brad was one this past week, so he says it's building up. We have a couple of things planned. Hopefully discussing some plans for using this to build out here for like Olympics or, you know, obstacle courses and stuff like that, which we're working on, which we talked about at our staff meeting today. But the numbers are increasing. It's slowly because it's summer, but they are coming along.
Super.
And we're gonna start working with dry land training, working on that. So it's coming along.
Excellent. Steve, any thoughts here? I didn't do stuff in the afternoon, you see my whole side of it.
I look forward to discussing, you know, things July 22nd. I threw it kind of stick in it. And, yeah, kind of, you know, concerned like a lot of people are, I think, with, you know, with some of the programs. So a lot of hopeful. And, you know, the numbers on N WAC, for example, you know, that you as well are concerned with those numbers. And I'm anxious to... I think we're supposed to discuss that here in July as well. We're all disposed of the question again, and all these things. So I'm going to wait until then, I think, to discuss that actually.
Um, actually, I do have a question. And Eric is not here, but maybe... I think the answer will still get... Go on, Chris. Anyways, we concluded lifeguard training in the spring, and I can see that we're going to do another one in the fall. And I understand that we do train lifeguards for a number of other facilities and individuals for purposes other than N W P R D. But how many of the lifeguards that we train actually end up working here?
Well, not on my record. I think the last class, a couple of them, there were a lot of kids that needed lifeguards or vacation to work like at Porky's.
So they came from different areas?
Sure.
Yeah, so the case safety is anyone else, but let me take a different patient.
We've got a number of lifeguards that were making money during this course and sent them on.
Oh, no. I'm not at all advocating changing the program at all. It was really just a question because I know, obviously, the lifeguards that we do work here, and we've got quite a few lifeguards who range in hours from, you know, a few hours a month all the way up to, you know, multiple hours per week. So it was really just a question to get a feel as to what type of individual might or what would motivate a person to come and use our lifeguard training classes. And I would imagine usually it's because of employment in somewhere.
Right. The flexibility right here in the ground, you just come here and do it. Move on to the present. Brother still makes money.
That's all I had.
Player of the month?
Yes, considering player of the month.
I would help this person.
Player of the month, it is.
Harden.
Tyler.
Captain Harden.
Captain Harden. She's our employee. She's got a lot for aerobics. Very open to come in anytime, do things, work around. She does a very good job. Aaron's trying to do a lot of management. She always has a few reports with the patrons.
We usually have a little certificate to sign that they can have. I don't see one here today, so I guess I can do that on more over the next day. Thanks. Do you know her? You know, you'll thank her for the... on behalf of the commission?
Oh, yes. We were like, that's very nice.
Any other staff reports? Any other issues from staff reports? Okay? Unfinished business, the public records request.
That was on the agenda from last month, and I think that that still had to do with that patrons' records request. Electronic records, records request.
Bill Walker still waiting on some stuff. Sean, which I think we did, I think put it on the... Got a flash out the other day. Put on the... What Sean was giving us wasn't matching up and people going, oh, it was all screwed up.
It seems to me we had a policy that you did a lot of work on.
Yeah, this is a... that's true. However, my understanding, this is a record request that came in prior to us adopting that policy, so we're still have to address that under the previous policy.
It's an issue. It's actually came in when the code was here and all the record that I really, I think it was.
But my question that has to do with that is, if we haven't finished fulfilling that records request, does that mean that... because at some point I stopped sending communications and emails, I should still be sending those in? Because it's still an open request.
Right. We can update the policy.
Oh, I think that means I gotta do a little more work.
Now, the question I thought this referred to was our policy. And I just like a really clear statement, so I understand that. This request predates the policy.
Correct.
But any other requests that we get are covered by the policy.
The policy.
And there's nothing we have to do to entrench the policy. It's done, it's complete, and it's as we had it two week meetings ago.
They put it on. You had any research instead?
Yep.
Or... How was that compared to the public policy here?
So we're done on that topic?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Two days.
So we won't put it on next month?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's clear and everybody can get the policy.
Right.
Okay. New business, budget workshop, 7 July... no, 22nd of July at 7:00 PM. Will it be right here in this room?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll do... we'll just sit right here and we'll work it out with anybody who wants to come. It's going to take two hours probably. And we'll go through the sort of research we've done on the budget so we can take a look. And, you know, you'll have some way of putting that together so that then you guys can take it and try and make it operational by August. that together so that then you guys can take it and try and make it operational by August, the third week in August or so. And it's a 2015 one that we're looking at.
That's the deadline, we're just...
Okay. Is everybody clear on that? You're all welcome, please. And we'll thrash around some numbers and try and get rid of some rumors about what things are and what things aren't. Commissioner position. The commissioner position is advertised now on the website. It's been up for a while. Was it advertised in the paper? I didn't see the ad when I looked for it.
We haven't put it in the paper. It's not a good thing to have others say it.
Would you put it in the paper, please? Because I think it's...
Oh, it's small.
Okay. And then we will see who's interested in the August meeting and make a decision there if there's a good set of people. Is that okay? Steve, send us, and Dave, is that okay?
Yes.
You're allowed to recruit on your own if you like. Okay, sensitivity training.
Yes. I met with the doors yesterday, Joanne, we've been talking for the last month or so. She came up for a visit yesterday, and she's going to set up the training with us. She's either, we're either going to do it just staff, then we're going to go out and train all our people, or we're just going to do one big session where they come up and do an hour or so of training. We haven't finalized what it was yet, but she'll get up, you get on indoors, and there's some topics there where download, downloads on sensitivity training, PowerPoint and stuff like that, you can do the training. So it's kind of up in here, which way? I'm kind of, I'll work with Joanne and then the cheapest way to do it, if you get it done. And when we're done with it, next, I'll say we're doing this.
So, so first of September, it'll all be finished, and everybody will go on to the training. Okay, good. And not liking the idea is not an excuse, it's good for all of us.
Correct.
Okay.
I got a special feeling.
Super. Yes, and I, and just to clarify, all of us means all of us, too.
Oh, I agree totally, okay. Do you have a good feel on what they're actually going to cover in the life? We talked about this before, and a lot of government sensitivity training, a lot of, typically it tends to be raised on a couple of hot areas.
But I discussed earlier, about ADA.
Okay, all right. Because a lot of our patrons come along with that, yeah, thank you very much.
They fall into the whole spectrum of humanity of terror.
What a wonderful, what a wonderful thing, yeah. Aren't we? To have you with this diverse community, and a lot of love, love, thank you all about it.
Okay, email accounts, it's the next topic. What is email accounts all about?
Last three, I'm sorry, I was going to say at the last meeting, Steve, sorry, Commissioner Hoffmeier brought up, Steve brought up the idea of having the commissioners have an Oak Harbor pool email address instead of all of us having our own. And that would serve two purposes. It, it solidifies our position with the district, for one, identifies us as belonging to the district, but also would allow our IT department the ability to archive, retrieve from archives, file it as necessary, instead of all of us having to go into our individual Gmail or Hotmail or whatever funky address you have, Alan, so that we can, you know, and it would, this is just the opinion of one commissioner, but it would help alleviate our liability in a public records request, because right now, the district really is kind of hung out there if I don't check my Hotmail folder, or if a member of the public sends something to a different email address that I have, that I don't normally check, or for whatever reason, if it's all held on, on the district server or through our IT, then...
Is that doable?
Yes, we're working with Microsoft right now, we don't have, we come to our limit of licenses through Microsoft, so we're working on Microsoft to get four more licenses.
And then...
And then they'll set up the...
And then it's almost we only use this account, this address, so we're dealing with pool business or district business, then when there's a public records request, it just goes from there?
Correct.
That's great, that would be...
So yes, Aaron and I are working on it since last minute.
That's the way to go. Thank you. Future programs?
I'm just looking long-term. We're looking for startup roller, hockey, I guess we did that a couple years ago. We have all the equipment, our partnership forms and stuff that we can put on it, but it's just long-term, it's not going to be this summer, we're looking at like maybe some summer programs, drop-ins, parts and crafts here, use the park out there next to softball field and baseball field for some type of tournament, whether it's kickball, or, you know, any kind of tournament. So that's just long-term we're looking at, and it may not be budgeted right now, but working on something slow-cost, low-maintenance, just bringing in a few dollars.
You might talk to the city and see, the, the use of these grounds are really complicated, but I know that they are available, but just so that we could stake out what we can do and what we can contribute.
Like I said, Brad will plan on having a little obstacle course out here, work some things for the fitness club. And the last thing is, we're getting rid of that vending machine right now.
You're getting rid of the vending machines?
Yes, we are. They should be here, take a lot of tenders, so we can increase our revenue from what we have.
So the store will grow behind the desk.
Yes.
It'll reclaim some nice space in the lobby, too.
Right, we're trying to, channel pay, or talk.
Sweet. Your joke goes along, your joke goes along with mine, Dino, I was going to say, you know, sensitivity training is important, I think that it's, it should be a matter of policy that we treat everybody equally, we should just treat everybody poorly. Just kidding.
Thanks.
Correct.
Don't put that in a minute.
No, that, that won't go in a minute.
Okay. Any last comments? Steve, public comments, but we'll do it first.
I have nothing else to say.
How about you?
We were going to talk about, actually, we were going to talk about that. So no, I don't have anything.
Yes, Lynn, yep. Now it's coming, it's coming to public comments.
I know that you're going to eventually kind of deal with the N W A C issues next month, but, you know, obviously, there are many questions there, and I appreciate your focus on making a plan and achieving proof. One of the things that I think is really important is that, we don't have to worry about, that the board really be proactive in defining your expectations for the team. You know, really, at this point, as we look at what's happened over the last year, by all measures, we've seen deterioration, whether we're talking sheer numbers, practice agenda, community agenda, it's made for form, whatever, it might be recreational, involved, or anything. You know, our family's family paradigm is working very well for us, and certainly, a little, much more cumbersome than it used to be, but it's effective, we're happy with that, we're not, not looking for something that meets my needs. But what I asked for a year ago was clear direction about the board's expectations of the team and how we would measure that, so that we could make good decisions for our family about what, what it is for the purpose. And I, you know, kind of feel like that keeps getting pushed off, and it really isn't the responsibility of staff to tell board this is what our team's going to be, but rather the board to say, this is what we want out of this team. And in the process of us trying to determine what we were going to do next, I did talk to the board's team, and Jason very graciously said, you know, we're, I don't think we're going to only competitive, but if you want, I think you've got a lot going to develop him, and Jason's doing a phenomenal job with numbers up there, but it's a different kind of team, that's okay. But, but it's authentic, it is what it is, and he's honest about that. And I think it's really important to be honest about the motivation of the team, and then the team reflect that and produce that. And, you know, last year there were less, N W A C swimmers winning the KNS with 60 races, this year there are five with 10 races, you got about half the swimmers in the third of races, and everything's sliding in the wrong direction, where it can be very hard to restore. And it is really important that the, that the board say, what is what we want, and how does what we want connect to our overall goals? Because I, what I always tell people is that swimming, the active swimming is really ancillary for my family's participation. It's all the other stuff that's what we teach as my children, that's why we invest so much, we have to learn those things somewhere to break the ripple for that. And I think as a board, you've got to say, what is the purpose of our swim team, the lives of the community and the children, how do we evaluate that that's happened? So I hope in addition to getting something from a coach, you also would evaluate that for yourselves, and I think that's quite a good idea, because I think it also impacts then what we invest in, because what do we want it to do? And what's its role in the overall of our ministry? So not advocating for a singular purpose, it's nice, it's really a common purpose.
Right. One of the things on this board, just speaking as the chair, is that there are five, now four, strong people with very different points of view, and so I wouldn't dare speak for the board.
Sure.
But I can tell you procedurally, what I'm hoping will happen. I'm hoping that Bill and Gino will get together with whoever they get together with, and put out a document which will then give us a chance to say what we think. I think it's inappropriate for us to tell you guys or the staff exactly what the swim team's going to be, but we may disagree and then have a discussion. But we have to get that document first, then the commission, and those people will chat about the plan, and if there are problems, then we'll thrash it out as problems. And I would hope that we could do that three months ago, but next month maybe, before the budget meeting, because if we can do that, then those budget numbers could become part of the problems that we've raised on both sides, talking about how we want to see that type of a dream, whatever it is, and I haven't brought, I know there'll be four different dreams from the commission, five maybe if a new person comes on, which we'll have to work through that, if that makes sense. Is that reasonable, Steve? Okay? So, and feel free to shoot, as I say, I'm not, we're all okay? Okay. So that would be the way I would respond. Any other public comments? Okay, our next monthly meeting is August 21st, right here, at 7:00 PM. Our workshop next installment is July 22nd, right here, at 7:00 PM, and I'll have some numbers and pages, and Gino will have some thoughts on those for that meeting, okay?
For the record, I may not be here August 21st, so just right in there.
Would you like to, could we change the meeting to the 14th, or, no, not the 14th? The 28th?
I just want, I mean, it would be, you know, it's up to you. I will be in Eastern Washington most likely.
Okay.
Going to Jack Johnson concert, the same.
That is no excuse.
I bought the tickets four months ago, sorry, you're up.
How's your schedule look?
Well, 28th is fine, I can tell you that...
21st is just as good.
21st is just as good.
Whatever you guys decide.
Okay.
If you want to get the 28th, 14th, whichever, but if I can't be here, I didn't want to wait till that, so...
Thanks.
You're welcome.
21st, 28th differences for you guys?
I would like to be here.
Yeah. Why don't, why don't we do it the 28th now, give you another week to thrash out whatever kind of...
I just have to ask one thing real quick. So, because I can't remember what the RCW said on this, I'm trying to remember, how many days do we have to appoint this, this, you know, the vacancy to fill that position? Because I know if we have X amount of days, I don't remember if it's 60 to 90, is it 90? Because if we don't get it done, then it's kind of thing the county commissioner wants that position, so...
Okay, how long have we used up now?
Thirty... It will have been nine weeks at that point, probably, you know, it's...
That's only nine weeks.
Wasn't it June?
Yeah, it's the end of June.
Yeah. Okay, okay, all right. So it's 90 days, not 60?
So the 28th then would be...
Okay, that's our program.
All right. Okay, so we'll do the commissioner thing at that time, and we'll also do the 2015 budget.
Thank you for moving that by the way.
Okay.